First 2023 meeting of the Oyster River Cooperative School Board. We will start by approving the agenda. I do have two additions tonight we'd like to add in the discussion action items. A discussion about rescheduling the March 15th meeting and also an additional non-public before the superintendent evaluation, non-public related to facility use. So I will move the agenda with those additions. A second from Matt. Any discussion? All those in favor of the agenda as amended? Seven in favor and the student rep in favor? All right. Next up is public comment. We have four people signed up for public comment tonight, so we'll start by going through that list. And then if there's anybody else who'd like to make public comment, that will be okay as well. We typically do three minutes for public comment per person, so please come on up to the podium here. Our first one is Donald Anderson. You have to push the button to turn the green. Yeah, thanks, Matt.
My name is Lou Grandin. I'm the chairman of the Lee Energy Committee, and I'd like to start off by saying how impressed I am by the Net Zero Middle School. It's really awesome. It sets a great example for our state and our nation, and examples are very important. One of the biggest incentives in the average homeowner's decision to get rooftop solar is whether or not the neighbors have one. That's just human nature. So I hope many school districts follow your lead. The energy efficiency of the building is spectacular. Energy efficiency is the greenest form of energy. Negawatts are just as important as megawatts. Geothermal is the most efficient way to heat the building. One of my favorite things about the building is the way that the solar array is on top of the parking lot. One of my favorite ways to go for a solar array placement is parking lots because that's the way we have to go. That's where the room is. We have enough parking lots to cover the state of Connecticut in this country. So another great example for the state and the nation. So why stop there? I'm here to propose that the school board consider having a solar array installed on the roof of Mastway School. The roof of Mastway School is an ideal location for a solar array. It has a large, continuous roof with very few obstructions to the sunlight. From your experience with solar, you know that the school district can get a power purchase agreement for funding the solar array that will spread the upfront costs for several years in that the payback period is not that long. After the array is paid off, the solar array will be earning money for the school district for many years. I can assure you that there's a great deal of support for solar in Lee, just as there's lots of support in Durham and Madbury. A warrant article to authorize a solar array on a transfer station in Lee passed by 83%. And they are going to start next Monday, so we're excited about that. Many people that I've spoken to in Lee would like to see an array on Mastway School. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I'm also, my name is Don Anderson. I'm a member of the Lee Energy Committee as well and also an Oyster River School resident for now over 23 years. Seldom does a single opportunity come along to provide options to both save money and save the planet. This building is obviously one. It was a long-term investment, and as Louis said, we can get now is the time to get things in action because of the way things can be financed readily for solar. The Energy Committee in Lee has become very active in investigating all forms of energy, conservation and renewable energy implementation that doesn't cost taxpayer money. For example, we are putting that Community Power Program warrant article in March on the ballot to give options for our residents in their individual electric supply. It can save money, but it also can increase the amount of renewable energy certificates. As Lou mentioned, we already have approved a new solar array for the recycling center in town, hopefully starting installation next week. Both will provide electrical savings, just as the school board did for this beautiful building here. This is my first time in here, so I'm still in awe at the place. Present-day students who will be tax-paying adults in a very short time are already outspoken about the need for leadership to move forward in saving the planet from ourselves for their generation. Trust me when I say present students will be adults in a blink of an eye. Both my daughters were educated in the school system, and now one is a CRNA and the other one is a PhD scientist. And they refer to the values and the leadership that they learned in Oyster River School System. Beyond providing the most rapid implementation for energy conservation for individual residents, the Community Power Program can incorporate singular projects and actually gain income over time through energy certificate credits recognized by the state of New Hampshire. So this project that we're asking for can become part of that actual payment to the town beyond just saving of electricity. So we're asking for your leadership in getting this moving forward, and we appreciate anything that the board is able to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Katrin Casper. I'm from Lee as well. I'm just going to second and third what they said. We're really excited about focusing more on energy awareness in the town of Lee. We would love to see some solar panels up on the Mastway School. They gave great reasons, so I won't go into all of them. I would also like to say a reminder to everyone in the district that Friday is the last day to put your name in the ring for running for school board and select board and all of those great positions, so don't forget. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Carol Doring. I'm a retired teacher, and I'm a member of the Community Power Committee in Lee, and I'm here to support this proposal for an array on Mastway for the same reasons everybody else has mentioned. But I just want to bring up what an awesome opportunity it will be for education as a fantastic inspiration for 1,000 lesson plans on energy and resilience and sustainability. And in these days, when many young people feel a certain gloom and doom about climate crises, we can demonstrate that our community is resilient and adaptable, and we will give them hope for the future. So thank you for considering our proposal.
Is there anybody else who'd like to speak at public comment this evening? All right. Thank you very much. Next up is the approval of the minutes. We have regular and non-public meeting minutes from January 18th. Denise?
Make a motion to accept the regular meeting minutes from whatever.
January 18th.
Thank you. I'm looking at my February 1st minutes, so yes, January 18th.
So a motion from Denise and a second from Brian. Any discussion or corrections for the January 18th regular minutes? All those in favor of approving the January 18th regular meeting minutes? Seven in favor and the student rep in favor. The minutes are approved. And we have the non-public. Denise?
Make a motion to approve the January 18th non-public minutes.
A motion from Denise and a second from Matt. Any discussion? All those in favor of the non-public minutes from January 18th? Seven in favor and the student rep in favor. Those are approved. All right. Next up, announcements, commendations, and comments from the district.
David Goldsmith from Moheramit.
Good evening. Ms. Dilo from Mastway School.
We have one update that is for both schools, and then we'll give our updates that are individually. But we are beginning our kindergarten registration for the 23-24 school year very soon, and so we wanted to make sure that you all knew about that and any of the community members listening know about that. We are a public school, of course, so we accept registrations anytime anybody moves into our district. But for anybody who's currently living in the district and they know that they have students who are of kindergarten age, or if you know neighbors who have kids who are of kindergarten age, it's incredibly helpful for everyone to register during this period so that we can get a really good idea about the numbers that we have going into next year, and we can start planning for that. So kindergarten registration begins Monday, February 6th, which is next Monday. It goes through Tuesday, February 14th. And for the vast majority of that time, we're asking people to come in from between 10:00 and 3:00 during those school days and to register in the office of either Moheramit or Mastway. On Wednesday, February 8th, we're staying open until 6:00 PM for people who need to come in the evening. And on Tuesday, the 14th, we are starting that process at 8:00 in the morning for families who need an early time. So we have a day that's 8:00 to 3:00, a day that's 10:00 to 6:00, and the rest are 10:00 to 3:00. There is an application, there's a packet online, and there's also some paperwork that has to be done in person with proper documentation. So we've, of course, done all of our usual advertising to all the area groups that would have kindergarten-age kids coming to us, and we're asking, of course, for everyone in the district who is excited to enroll their kids in our schools that they do so starting next week. Cool. Anything else about that? Do you want to do your thing?
Sure. I would just add about the kindergarten registration, what an exciting time of the year that is. It's one of my favorite things is to welcome new families into our school system. That's sort of their first greeting into the many years of greatness in this district, so it's really a special time. The other things I wanted to add for Mastway is today was International Global School Play Day. And although a lot of our educators incorporate play in their teaching techniques and strategies on a regular basis, especially in the primary grades, at Mastway School, it's been a tradition for several years to, across all grades, Unified Arts, all the educational settings to have an approach of play in our instruction, and that was today, so I wanted to share that. I also wanted to share that progress reports for both schools are going out this week. That was an extension due to some of our snow days and the impact that that had on folks having power and being able to finish writing progress reports. So Friday, your children will come home with a physical copy of a progress report. We encourage families to read that over with their children and then sign the envelope and return it to the school. So progress report's coming. Lastly, I just wanted to share that Mastway is really emphasizing writing this year, and we're doing that in a couple of ways school-wide. We do have a school-wide post office called We Deliver. Every classroom has their own address, and we have school-wide pen pals who write one another and, you know, a postmaster and an assistant postmaster who pick up the mail, deliver the mail. And it's a really great way to promote letter writing and handwriting. So in addition to that, our school-wide theme this year is communication. So we had to drop everything and write recently, and every child in the school has a pen pal that they will be writing with throughout the school year. So writing is just a big emphasis curricular-wise that I wanted to share as well.
And at Moheramit, we have, I told you the last time we spoke that we were continuing with our sugaring program, of course, and looking to really engage with our community to extend our ability to sugar into infinity. And we were able to host 12 Moheramit community members at our Sugar Shack last night in the cold with a beautifully roaring evaporator. And Mr. Davis taught and talked about the history of Moheramit sugaring and the process of doing that. So we have all these parents who are interested and now committed to learning about how to run our evaporator and help with the sugaring program, so we're really excited to continue that. And then the week before break, we're having our celebrating reading week, and we have a number of activities planned, including a visiting author, Jerry Pallada, who's coming on Wednesday to speak to all the grade levels, and we're really excited about that. So those are some of the great things going on at Moheramit. Questions for either Ms. Dilo or myself? Heather?
Do we have star reports coming as well as the progress reports in the packet?
Yep. Those go home with the January progress report. Brian?
When, as far as the kindergarten registration, doesn't really matter what school they go to register, because I know like in Lee, some go to Moheramit, although they might not know that. So if they happen to end up at Mastway, that'll be something that's decided, you know, or let them know at least that they may be going to Moheramit depending on, obviously.
Correct. We've operated that way for a number of years now to deal with balancing classrooms and making choices in the best interest of all of our families and students, and so we talk about that a lot. It's a little confusing, but families register for their kindergarten in Oyster River. We make school placement decisions as well as classroom placement decisions in August when we're able to really look at the map and look at our classroom numbers. We've very rarely had to make adjustments, but we have had to do it occasionally, and it's been a really helpful way to be able to balance classes out. So families usually register at the school that they think they go to, and we can look at where those addresses currently are. They would usually come to that school for the screenings that we do in June. However, if they end up going to the other school for screening, it's totally fine. We share all of our information, and all of our staff work together to do that. And then, yes, in August, we send out the actual school placement as well as class placement. And we look to support our families if they have siblings or other situations and where they're living and how it matches up with buses. We take all of that into consideration as we look to make sure that people are in their best spots.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The button. Good evening. Jay Rashad, principal at the middle school. A couple of quick announcements. Tomorrow night's the Grade Five music concert. That'll be band, chorus, and strings. We needed to reschedule that for the previous week. I recognize there's a couple conflicts. One of them is the eighth-grade information night. It's just really hard to schedule the musical hall this time of year. Of that note, with that eighth-grade information night, I just want to compliment the high school counseling team and Shannon and Karen. They've done a phenomenal job. They actually visited the eighth graders yesterday to talk about course selection. They'll be back in a couple of weeks, so I appreciate the time they spent with the kids, and the kids have enjoyed it. And just again, much appreciated. Progress reports, my plan is for them to go home on Monday, but I'm actually hoping to be able to send them, if we can get everything printed out, Friday to send those home Friday, and the star reports will be included in those as well. So at the latest, Monday, hopefully Friday afternoon, Kindness Week will be February 13th to the 17th. We have a guest speaker coming in, and we have a lot of positive activities planned for the students that week, so it's a great way to head into the February break. And also during the break, February 19th, our robotics program will be competing in the state tournament. And to be clear, this isn't something that everybody gets invited to. You have to earn the opportunity to go to the state tournament, and we have 12 teams that are going there, so it's just super impressive. We do have a phenomenal robotics program here, and it's a credit to the kids and their hard work and dedication, of course, our three coaches, John Savario, Jay Terrell, and Jason Duff. So I'm looking forward to the results, and I anticipate we'll have some teams that get sent to the world championship, so thank you.
Jay, what time is the concert and what time is the eighth-grade transition?
The eighth-grade transition is from 6:00 to 7:30, and the concert's at 7:00. And of course, we have the community dinner tomorrow night as well, so I did have a couple parents reach out about the conflict, and again, I apologize, but you can drop the kids off here and I'll watch them for you. I'll be here. We'll make sure they're safe. Thank you.
Does that apply to all kids? We can drop off so you can watch them? Jay?
Rebecca Noe, principal at the high school. So speaking of program and studies and eighth-grade transitions, the program of studies was published last week, so I sent that link out to parents in the newsletter, but it's easy to find on the website, so it's on the counseling page. I will send that out again this Friday also. Just so parents know, kids have until the 17th of February to request their classes, and so after that time, it's closed to kids to request classes. But when they meet with their counselors in the month of March, counselors go through their graduation requirements, talk about credits, look at the recommendations from teachers, and spend about 15 minutes or so with each student to make sure they're signed up for the things they need. And if there are any changes, the counselors can still make changes throughout March. And then the real master scheduling process begins near the end of March and into April. Speaking of our counselors and our director of counseling, Shannon and Karen, they did a wonderful job with the middle school yesterday. I know they spent a long time. One thing I heard from them was how many questions the eighth graders asked, and so their bingo game cut a little bit short, but they said they had some amazing questions, peppered them the whole time, and so it was really a fun experience for a whole counseling department. I did want to add that Shannon has made a ninth-grade program of studies, so something that she put together so it's just easier for parents and eighth-grading ninth graders, eighth graders to look at that and see all the classes available to them. So that's going to be published also very soon, just so it's something simpler that parents can look at and figure out what classes are available to their kids. Report cards, because of all of our white days and snow days, got pushed, and so this Friday, report cards will be published. It is electronic at the high school, and so in the newsletter, I will publish the directions on those again, just to make sure parents know how to find that on Power School. Tomorrow night is our eighth-grade parent night, so that is at 6:00 PM that it begins. We say till 7:30. It might be a little bit shorter than that. So it's about an hour, maybe an hour and 10 to 15 minutes, but we say 7:30, so we're always available for parents to have questions at the end. But when the actual presentation's over, parents can absolutely go to the concert or anything else that they need to go to. That's really-
Rebecca, where is the eighth-grade parent night? What location?
Auditorium, the high school auditorium.
High school.
And I guess the last kind of the good news piece that I wanted to talk about were the two basketball games this week. And so both the girls' game and the boys' game, it was faculty appreciation night, so it was just really fun to see the teachers be able to go, be appreciated by particular students, tell a little story about them, receive flowers. But both games just ended in a really exciting way, so I know especially with the girls' game, to watch them come from behind, be tied at two minutes in, and then literally in the last three seconds, we had Kaitlyn Klein who made the buzzer beater shot, and so we got to record that. It was just, I mean, all the stands jumped up and cheered, so that was amazing. And then last night, it was almost a repeat, but the boys ended up in about a minute and a half beforehand being able to get ahead and just made some absolutely wonderful shots to end the evening, and they couldn't catch up in those last three seconds for the other side. But it was just fun to be a part of that and see that and appreciate that with our faculty, so. Any questions? Yes?
I understand also that the CTE, the Career Technical Education deadlines are coming up.
The application is for the 17th, correct. So if you want to take CTE courses next year, even if you've been in CTE before, you still need to reapply. And so that is something, we're having class meetings this week, so juniors have their meeting on Monday, sophomores were today, and freshmen are on Friday. And so we're going over all of the pathways, about course requests, how they do that, and so that is going over that with the students too, but the CTE applications are due by the 17th, that Friday. Other questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And announcements, commendations, and comments from the board? Heather?
Hit the wrong button then. The Moheramit PTO is putting on their annual winter carnival, the first since COVID, on Saturday from 1:00 to 4:00 at the high school. So we'll have full-size, fun, big games and a bake sale and some student performances, the middle school jazz band. I think Quest is coming to do demonstration as well as one of the Irish step dancers, but I can't remember their name, sorry. And it's open to anyone in the community. It's not just a Moheramit event. This is our one event for everyone, and it's free of charge.
I just want to commend the staff of The Mouth of the River, which is the high school news magazine, for another great addition. It is just, I'm always blown away by the quality.
Dan?
Yes. I just wanted to mention something that Lauren Selly wanted to share with us, but she couldn't be here. Next Wednesday, in Representative Hall at the State House, there are, at 9:00 AM, there will be a gun possession in school zones hearing. And then later in the day, she says it's scheduled for 2:30, but it might not happen exactly at 2:30, is another hearing very similar on gun possession related to schools. So she just wanted to share that information. Thank you.
I just wanted to thank the High School Robotics Club. They hosted me on Monday, and it's just an amazing group of kids. Those practices do not waste a second of time or a second of space, and if you happen to be a mechanical engineer, it would be worth maybe stopping in. They could use some help.
I was looking at some of the background information in preparation for the deliberative session next week, and I was looking back at some of the bonding history. So when we bonded the construction bonds for this building, we had interest rates between 1.97 and 2.01%. The most recent 25-year bond, so same time period, from the New Hampshire Municipal Bond Bank in October, was at 4.71%. And over the life of the bonds, that's a difference of about $20 million in interest that we would be paying in addition if we were bonding now instead of when we did three years ago. All right. We'll move on to district reports. So first up is the superintendent.
Just a few things I wanted to mention. One is the transition work that both Jay and Becca alluded to. We will be presenting, we'll have Shannon, Karen, and Stephanie Caden coming to present about some of the transition work that's been happening with counseling and faculty and students. Also, the kindness week that Jay spoke about, I had the opportunity of going to one of their planning meetings this week and just seeing the excitement and all of the different ideas that they have. I'm very excited to be a part of that and to participate in some of the different things going on at the middle school. Along those lines, I just want to mention there are a lot of faculty involved with all of these different activities and weeks and transitions, and I just met today with the math committee, and there were about 20 faculty members there, just all kinds of committees and curricular work, activities for students. I went to, attended a key club presentation, which is the first key club experience for the high school this week, and that, or maybe that was last week. That was, it was absolutely amazing. That had a faculty member behind it. So I just want to thank all of the faculty that are involved with all of these different activities and get students involved regularly and are part of the curricular work that takes place before school and after school, because that really does, that really is what makes the school such a passionate place for learning and for exploration for our kids. So thank you. Along those lines, I feel like we have a theme of sustainability this evening because we have the youth climate leaders here with us to talk about their experience at the Youth Climate Leadership Academy. And this group of students, really, they're going to introduce themselves, but these students are making a difference for their own communities and for the global community. And I really want to thank them for the work that they're doing and for what they're bringing to us here at the district. So I'd like to invite them up.
Hi. So we would love to start by introducing ourselves. My name is Emily Walsh, and I'm a junior.
Hello. My name is Grace Webb, and I'm a senior.
Hi. My name's Abby Owens. I'm a junior.
Hi. My name's Caitlin Lynch. I'm a sophomore.
Hello, my name is Grace Webb and I'm a senior.
Hi, my name's Abby Owens. I'm a junior.
Hi, my name's Caitlin Lynch. I'm a sophomore.
Hi, I'm Avery. I'm a junior.
Hi, I'm Chloe Hawks. I'm a senior.
Hi, I'm Hazel Stasko. I'm a junior. So on December 2nd, nine Oyster River Sustainability Club students, along with John Bromley and the Spalding High School Environmental Club, began the two-hour bus ride to, to the Hulbert Outdoor Center in Fairleigh, Vermont to attend the Youth Climate Leaders Academy.
The Youth Climate Leaders Academy, or YCLA, is a program hosted by Vermont and New Hampshire Energy Education Project. This was the first year since 2019 that the ORHS has attended due to COVID.
So YCLA is a two-day program that aids students in beginning action projects to address climate-based issues in their communities. During the duration of our stay in Vermont, we visited various different workshops, such as How to Lead a Great Meeting, hosted by activists leading the push for climate in New Hampshire, Vermont. We also had lots of team time to work on our projects and conference with one another as students from Oyster River, as well as approximately seven student, 70 students from across New Hampshire and Vermont who attended, which are pictured on the slide.
Okay, hi. So our group focused on more specifically transportation. And when I say our group, I mean myself, Chloe, and Caitlin. And I think initially, and I can't speak for the rest of them, I was a little hesitant to sort of immerse myself into this project because I don't have like extensive knowledge on this issue. But the cool thing about YCLA was that we were able to collaborate with other schools and other students who were trying to create solutions to similar issues that we were. And also, we had access to mentors who did have extensive knowledge about these sort of things. So they were able to be super helpful and they were super engaged. And we were able to create some pretty meaningful solutions, or at least ideas for solutions. And one of those ideas is tackling idling, specifically within the parking lot at the high school at the end of the day. If you've ever had the pleasure of seeing the high school at the end of the day, junior lot and senior lot are pretty packed. And if you're lucky, you can get out of there within two minutes. And if you're not lucky, you can be sitting there for like 15 minutes. So we were thinking about maybe putting up no idling signs and sort of seeing how we could spread the word about how harmful idling is to the environment. But one of our mentors, her name is Mariah. She was super great and just super awesome. She kind of encouraged us to see like what the root cause, or try to determine what the root cause of this idling was. And Chloe's going to talk to you more about what we were able to come up with.
So we discovered at YCLA, through discussion with these mentors, that we did need to address the origin of the transportation emissions in our district. So at the academy, we were able to develop the goal of reducing the number of single occupancy vehicle usage driving to school each day. So in the coming years, we are hoping to encourage carpooling, bus ridership, bike riding, and walking in place of single occupancy vehicle usage at the high school. And through discussion with other school groups that were focusing on similar issues to us with transportation in how the majority of upperclassmen at the schools are using single occupancy vehicles to drive to school each day, even when other options are readily available to them. And we were able to discover that there were many unknowns of this issue in our personal district. So as a result, we are beginning to address this issue by surveying students to gather both quantitative and qualitative data surrounding how and why students are using these single occupancy vehicles so that we can begin to address the source causes.
So our second project was focused on food waste, and that was me, Avery Merrill, and Grace Webb. And we wanted to look, so historically, our, the Sustainability, Sustainability Club at the high school has focused more on the output of our food waste. But at YCLA, we came up with the idea of focusing on like how we're on the input, like where we are sourcing our food. So we wanted to look at if the school district had a food, or a farm-to-plate program and to what extent they were. And we kind of had this idea of reviving community dinners with a focus on spotlighting regenerative agriculture farmers and then Mr. Fox, who is our, who is who we send our compost to. So when we got home, we collaborated with the district community, Sustainability Committee. And tomorrow night, there is going to be a community dinner at the high school. So if you guys want to come, you guys can.
So our second and third goals for the food waste project, address our school's food waste. And we really wanted to focus on continuing our efforts from the past few years surrounding reconstructing our compost system at the high school. And we've dealt with a lot of plastic contamination in the large compost bins in our cafeteria. And this year, we have placed an emphasis on education because that's a component that we previously missed when we were reevaluating our compost system. So we have presented at class meetings to engage with students. We have drafted advisory curriculum. And we are working on strengthening our presence within our community at the school. And we are also focusing on that engagement piece with the student body through social media and getting that interaction with what we are working on. We have also painted the compost bins in the cafeteria a nice bright green color. So they're very noticeable now. Before, they were the same color as the trash bins. And we were pretty certain that students were unaware that there was a difference. We have also designed new signage that clearly labels what can and cannot be put in food waste bins. And we will be assisting students during lunches. We'll be standing by the bins and helping them sort their food waste so we can really drill in what can and cannot go into the certain bins. And lastly, we really want to strengthen the connection between what students put in the bins and the final product of the compost, the soil. And part of accomplishing that is evaluating where we send our food waste. So currently, we send it to Mr. Fox, which is a commercial composting facility in Maine. And so they drive their trucks back and forth to pick up our food waste. And so one of the thoughts that we had, well, are those emissions offsetting the emissions that we're saving by reducing the food that goes to the incinerator. And so we thought about how we could possibly have our compost be sent somewhere local. And that could look like having a compost pile directly for the school district or possibly collaborating with UNH and really placing that emphasis on the, the connection between what students do in the, in the school and then that final product. So we could, you know, bring students on field trips to see that process throughout. And so they could actually see that soil that comes out of, you know, what they, they do at school.
Our third and final project that came out of YCLA focuses on education outreach and engagement. I worked on this project alongside Lydia Foster and Norrie Sandin. And we kind of began this project by taking a look back at our past work, especially with the new compost system that we've been working on implementing over the last few years. And we noticed that engagement was really an issue with why the compost bins weren't being used to their full extent. And so in hopes to increase the, this engagement and the sustainable culture in our school, we created three goals. The first goal is culture. We really want to take a step back and look at our school's culture and try to find the stem of that lack of sustainable, I guess, like sustainable mindset among the students, especially with our compost system. And then our second goal is to work on communication and improving the collaboration at the school district level. So we've been working with the district Sustainability Committee and we're hoping to meet with middle school students soon, as well as elementary school students, if they have any clubs of that sort. And to kind of wrap it all up, we really try to use social media as an outlet. We have an Instagram page, more focused for students. And then we have a monthly newsletter that goes out to the community about our work and other sustainable topics. So supporting that communication should hopefully help all of these projects that they are working on come together. Our overall goal with this project is to create a sustainable, climate-positive culture throughout the Oyster River School District by spreading awareness and working on engaging leading influencers in the student body, school administration, faculty, and members of the community. Education and student engagement is key to the success of other systems and projects. And in tandem with this, we hope to create a consistent K through 12 sustainability-based curriculum.
So on behalf of our Sustainability Club, I'd like to say that the Youth Climate Leaders Academy has taught us valuable skills such as teamwork and collaboration and truly following through on projects that we've started. But also, we have grown as a group of students who didn't quite know each other outside of the classroom setting. So I'm grateful not just for the valuable leadership skills and climate advocacy that I've learned, but for the friendships and for the bonds that we strengthened throughout the weekend. And so I'd just like to end by acknowledging all of the hard work that my fellow Sustainability Club members have done and to Mr. Bromley for, you know, that time and energy and dedication they've all put in in helping the Oyster River District do our part to help the planet. So thank you. And any questions?
What is the Instagram name or whatever?
I think it's ORHS.susclub.
Oh, okay.
That's our Instagram, yes.
This is awesome. Thank you so much. I have two questions. One is pretty specific about the idling, which is such a big deal, right? And you're, you're experiencing that as high school students. I would encourage you also to think about the parent lines, parent and guardian pickup lines at both the middle school and the high school. Once pickup starts, it inches along and you have to keep your car running. But the lines form 10 minutes early, right? And so somehow, getting everyone to turn off their car, temperature permitting, as they just sit there would be fantastic. The other, so that wasn't a question there, but I see lots of nodding, so. I'm imagining like, you know, students out there with signs to the parents, right? Because no idling. The small, small signs don't, don't work as well as, you know, students who are pushing it. I did want to ask, this is clearly extracurricular, the academy is, and the time that you put into the club outside of classes, you know, you clearly have invested in that. I'm curious what connections between this additional exploration and expertise that you're developing outside of your classes and connections to, to what you're learning in your classes. You know, across, not necessarily classes that are, are titled with sustainability names, but, you know, in, in some of the other ways that in math or in English or social studies, issues of energy justice, that they're connecting to your Oyster River curriculum.
Yeah, I mean, I can start. I'm currently in environmental science. And I'd say that's very applicable, the things that I've learned in SUS Club. And we are just transitioning into more of the environmental studies side of things, which is more of that like advocacy work. So it's been, I've been able to connect what I've learned outside of the classroom into environmental science. And I also think just like learning public speaking skills and how to give a presentation has been incredibly helpful within my own academics. But if anyone has anything to add? Yeah, so actually, I was able to incorporate some of my AP stats knowledge. We're creating unbiased surveys, qualitative surveys to try and kind of like gauge what the issue is, as Chloe was saying, why people aren't driving single occupancy vehicles and things like that. So we're doing a little simple random sampling and things like that. So thank you, Mr. Harwood, if you're listening.
I would say that what we learned, not only in YCLA, but throughout like all of our diving into environmental issues has been very applicable to a lot of social studies classes just from the way the, the issue is approached from so many different perspectives. And I think that that's a tool that I've been able to apply to a lot of my other studies.
Are there any other questions?
So not so many questions. So you all will be tomorrow at the community dinner, giving a small presentation at?
5:30.
5:30?
Yes.
I can, I was trying to remember. So yay. And I will say that the, those of you who are joining the Sustainability Committee for the district have been awesome and we really appreciate your presence. And then my last question is, is this all of the Sustainability Club or are these just the folks that went to the conference?
Yes, just the people who went to the conference. We're missing a few. But yeah, we definitely have some more members.
So how, if you had to ballpark it, how many students do you have in the, the SUS Club?
Like 15, around 15, yeah. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you. That was excellent. And I really, I really appreciate how, you know, the conference ties back to things going on right here in our backyard immediately. Bringing that back, immediate action. Thank you.
I just want to reiterate what they said about the community dinner that is happening tomorrow evening. We have around 250-ish people registered to attend right now. And so we really encourage people to join us and we're very excited to be having that again. This is the first one post-pandemic, so we're looking forward to that. I also just want to say, sitting there, listening to them talk about the application of, of their experience into their classrooms, it really just reminds me of our graduation, of our vision of a graduate and the work around awareness of self, awareness of others, and transferable skills. So the work that they're doing really does speak to our vision. Thank you.
Heather?
I have a question for Suzanne. So the STAR reports are coming out with the progress reports. Do we have a parent's guide to STAR reports? Do we send one out? Do we have one? Because I know when I was reading mine last year, that they would be green in certain areas. And then at like the top level score, and I don't remember the details, so I'm going to get something wrong. But the top level score, they'd be like red. Like it'd be like, fine, 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 fine. At the top, it'd be like, nope, nope, red. And it was very confusing. And when we asked their teachers, we got inconsistent answers.
Okay.
And I know like the middle school math one, the teacher said, because it wasn't the math teacher we met with for the, my, the student conferences, like, all the parents are going to freak out about the math ones because everyone's red. So do we have a how to read STAR reports for dummies for parents? Because I could really use one.
There is a Q, there is a QR code that you can scan that brings you to Renaissance, which talks a little bit about how to, how to decipher the information and what the information means. And so what we can do, what I can do is work with the principals on giving them something that they can send out to families that would, that will help. But if people need additional support, even after looking at that, I would reach out to your school principal, or reach out to the teachers, and then reach out to the principals and they can also help with that. But I'll put something together and, and give it to them so that they can send it out. Yeah. Any other questions? Thank you.
All right, Dr. Morse?
So I'll start out with an easy report. We are in the process of finding Sue's replacement, the business administrator replacement. We've advertised, the advertisement ends on the 7th. We have a committee of about seven. Heather is part of that committee and I want to thank her for her time. And we will go through a screening process in an organizational meeting next week after it closes. And the following week, we will do interviews. The following week, we'll do reference checks. And we'll have a candidate for you for March 1st. So that's the timeline we're on at this point. A little bit more complicated issue I want to share with the board because we're in the process of communicating with students and parents. As many of you know, as parents, we've had a quick tip system in the district for... As many of you know, as parents, we've had a quick tip system in the district for over a decade. And it is based on the idea that everything is presented, is anonymous. What we've discovered recently is, well, we didn't discover it recently, we've known it, but we've taken action on it, is that the, we often get reports of behavior that is reportable to authorities, because we're mandated reporters. So if something happens that is reportable and we don't know who submitted it, we can't follow through. So we are taking a pretty dramatic turn, starting in the second semester of this year, and that is, we're not promising anonymity anymore, which may impact the number of reports we get. But the seriousness of the reports we're getting warrant a change in direction so we can follow through on issues. So in the current system, about one-third of the reports are anonymous, and one-third people, children are putting their names next to their concern. And then another third really is just silly teenage behavior. They're just dumping silly things in there, jokes, or, you know, that kind of thing. So the system's changing. We are informing the parents, we're informing the children. We're also emphasizing that this system is for the children. In the current system, parents are able to enter into this anonymous structure. It's not helpful to us. If a parent has a serious concern, we're now going to ask them to contact their building administrator with that concern. Because if something's being registered that's reportable, or a mandatory reporting function that we are required to do by law, and somebody is basically just giving us a whole bunch of concerns, but no way for us to follow it up, that's not helpful to the, to the students. So we will honor confidentiality as much as it is legally allowable, but we are making this shift because we're concerned about the safety of our children. And when statements are being made, we do need to follow up on them. And so that our students, now that they have all, all have their own laptop, this is five through 12, by the way, can enter their quick tip with their own personal laptop, which allows it to be traceable, and we're telling the kids, we're not hiding anything from the kids. And, and that will allow us to do our legal obligation. Part of the issue also is the feedback from students that says, you didn't do anything about my concern, because we had no way of following through on that concern. There was no name attached to it. And we also don't want to, we want to eliminate this so-and-so is suicidal, as an example, and then not be able to say to the student who submitted it, how do you know that? Where did you hear it? You know, we have an investigatory process that we need to go through. So this is a pretty radical change, but it's a change that administratively we felt was critically important to protect our students. So I wanted to put that out here tonight. It'll go out in email from my office. Both Jay and Becca will, will be sharing it with all of the students. They have a process they're going to go through in the next two weeks. And so the big change is, we, only the students can use Quick Tip. Parents will be asked to call in so we can keep it to the students. And the fact that we can trace back to the concern so we can document it and then, you know, protect kids, put them in a good place, you know, connect them with counseling, do the mandatory reporting we're obligated to do. So I wanted to make sure you all knew that tonight, and the reason behind it was really our concern about the safety of our students. Questions?
So I understand that the Quick Tips is also if a student is uncomfortable for how a staff person has, has behaved, and I can understand the, the move for students that are speaking about other students where we have a, a certain type of obligation to follow up. And I wonder about the concern for retaliation for, around staff people in particular, and what thinking has gone into that.
So let's be clear that if a child is making an accusation about an adult, and an adult retaliates as a result of that allegation, it's illegal for that adult to do that. So they will have been breaking the law. So if a student gives us a concern about a grown-up, the administrative team will follow through on that, and we will protect the anonymity of the student as much as we possibly can. But at some point, it may have to be revealed, because our teacher's contract says that accusations have to be revealed. But we would do due diligence before we would, would supply that, you know, because we want to make sure that any accusation that's put inside Quick Tips is validated before we move forward on, on anything, which is exactly why we need to be able to know who's making the accusation. Right? So that's the, that's the major piece, and I just want to reiterate just one thing, I don't like repeating, but what Suzanne said tonight about the community supper tomorrow night is amazing. You know, we haven't done one for over three years, you know? What could you expect with that kind of hiatus? And the fact that we have over 250 attendees is incredible. I'm so excited by that. So, I'm done, Michael.
Thank you very much, Dr. Morse. Business administrator.
Hi, just, good evening. I just have two quick updates for you. The first one is on our financial software conversion. As you know, we made the decision to go to the next version of our software. It's been, we've been told a number of years that they're phasing it out, and they're not going to support our current version, so we moved over to the next version. Little did we know that it's the new version. So we're kind of testing the new version as we go along, so it's been a little frustrating. But, you know, as I said, we got through our first payroll. Employees have been very patient with us. That's been a little bit of a struggle. Things all look different, they're new, a few hiccups here and there. But I also wanted to recognize Sabrina and Tim, because they're doing most of the work. There's many days when I leave the office and they're still there, and it's 5:30, 6 o'clock at night, so I really appreciate how hard they're working on that. And I also want to send a shout out to Teresa Proia, who's HR. And anytime we needed help, Teresa would roll up her sleeves and help us out. So we're making our way through that, and things are going okay for now. Questions? I noticed the new manifest, and everything looks a little different, but it's working.
I will say, like, when I did my transition to it was, there was a lot of blood, sweat, and tears that went into it, because it really is frustrating. And I'm 19 months into mine now, and I'm still making adjustments. So, not that it makes you feel any better, but, but it's, any transit, especially this particular software is tough, but, but in the long run, I think it ends up being better. And of course, you haven't made your first retirement report yet, which is a whole other. When you send your report to the retirement system?
Went out today.
Oh, it did?
Went out today. That was another one.
That was another challenge for me, too, so. I don't know how the staff you have either, so, but, but that's good, that's good to hear.
Yeah, it was nice to get out that first payroll and look in my checking account and see that I got my direct deposit. You know, that was the big key. You know, it was like quarter to seven on a Thursday night, you know, and we got it out there. And the next morning, I woke up in the middle of the night and looked, and it wasn't there, and I was like, oh, you know? And then the next morning, it was there, so that was good. Got over that hump. The other update I have for you is just a little update on the last storm we had over the weekend of January 20th. I think, God, in my history here, I don't think we've ever had a time where we've had all fours on generator power. I think we got hit really hard compared to other districts. We had a few hiccups, power going back and forth from the generator to the boilers to the generator, so we've, we've had to kind of work through that and figure out where, where the little hiccups are. We got through it, but that was pretty tough, I think, for me. I know, I couldn't get out of my house because I had a tree in front of the road, so I couldn't get there. Thank God, Dr. Morse and Suzanne, you went around and kind of checked out on, checked out the buildings, and, but yeah, that was a bit of a challenge. I don't think I've ever seen that happen here. But I don't think we've ever had generators either in all of our schools to kick in, so.
If I could add, one of the, you know, when you have an event like this, you, Sue and I and Suzanne sit down and try to figure out, what could we do better? One of the things that we have, have changed in the process, because it's not healthy for machines to jump between generators and electric power. It causes real strain on the system, and in particular, the sophistication of, of how this building is heated and cooled. And so this morning, we met with one of our maintenance staff and asked him if he would be willing to be, take on new learning, new workshops, new training, so he could be our mechanical specialist. So when things like this are happening, he would be able to work each building, or have the lead, lead janitors in, in the smaller buildings work and, and operate out of this building, and all just make sure that flipping back and forth wasn't happening, because really what should have happened on that day, but it's a learning experience for all of us, is we should have shut down the automatic feature, turned on the generators until we got a word from, from the power companies, and that would have taken the strain off the system. Fortunately, no damage was done, other than the frustration of the power company keep on telling us there's power to the buildings, and we keep on telling them there's not. And we think the reality was that there was power to the buildings, but because of the way the systems were operating literally across the district, it wasn't just this building, we felt like we needed to have a specialist, and we had a person on staff who was willing and capable. And so part of what we did today was get a commitment from him. He's thrilled to be able to do it, and willing to go through training, and the first training's coming right up on the 20th. And so I feel a lot better knowing that we have somebody who's trained specifically to monitor the mechanics of these buildings and be able to guide people through the, through the particular moment. But we also have contracted services, Granite State for this building is an example. So if we get in over ahead, we know who to call. And the one thing that we need to follow up on is the contract for the generator for this building. We want to make sure that that's in place, because the warranty period will end towards the end of February when we occupied the building. So we want to make sure that we have that covered.
We did make that connection.
Yeah.
We did.
So, you know, Sue and I, just like Lisa, Sue and I, when we have transportation issues, we sit down, we brainstorm through it, what could we do better? And I think this was the one issue that we thought, wow, we really need to have somebody who specializes in the mechanics of these buildings.
By the way, the, I did meet with the Transportation Department last week, and parking the buses under the canopy, that works really well.
Really well.
They really like that, yeah.
Yeah.
It really takes a lot of strain off their backs from shoveling snow off the buses, so having them up here was, really works out well, so. Any questions? Good? Thank you.
Yes, thank you, and thanks Jasmine for the update. Next up, Student Representative Paige.
Yeah, so I know the community dinner has been mentioned a few times already, but I'll just reiterate some specifics. It's going to be tomorrow night in the high school cafeteria at 5 o'clock, $8 per person and $20 per family of four. The high school hosted our 16th Poetry Out Loud competition, and I just want to congratulate our runner-up, who was Brenna Clow, and our winner, Juliana Cunn. So I also want to mention that the lip sync battle competition, that's going to be a fundraiser for the Nurses Fund, that's been postponed sometime in April, so please disregard my last announcement about that. And then lastly, the Student Senate is hosting our first mental health community forum. That's going to be at the high school auditorium as well, March 2nd. It's going to be a panel discussion. We're hoping to have students, counselors, teachers. We're not exactly sure who's going to make up that panel yet, but we're going to really hope that that's going to have a lot of attendance, because that's a really important issue in our district, as we know right now. So we're, we're really excited to have that first community conversation.
And that, that, the mental health forum, that'll be an evening thing, or will that be during the school day?
That'll be an evening thing.
Thank you very much. No finance committee report. Unanimous consent agenda is the policies. Are there any of these that anybody wants to pull out to discuss separately? If not, I'll move for approval of the unanimous consent agenda, which includes for second read adoption, policy BGA, policy development system, procedure BGA dash R, policy review, evaluation, adoption, and for deletion, policy BGC, policy review and evaluation. A second from Brian. All those in favor of the unanimous consent agenda? Seven in favor, and the student rep in favor. Those policies are approved and deleted. All right. Moving to discussion and action items. The first item is the School Nutrition Director's Letter of Retirement. This is, as I, as I opined at our last meeting, one of those things where I wish that it was the prerogative of the board to not have to take action. But we do have a, a letter of retirement from School Nutrition, School Nutrition Director Doris Demers. Heather.
I motion to accept the School Nutrition Director's Letter of Retirement.
A motion from Heather, and a second from Brian. Any discussion?
If we can make that motion with deep regret, we will accept her retirement.
Although I see here at the Sustainability Committee meetings, and she's fairly gleeful, so. I'm like, I feel so sad. I don't.
Further discussion?
Just deep gratitude to Doris for her many, many years of nutritious, sustainable food within a budget, carrying us through the pandemic, and that those economic highs and lows, just a tremendous partner in the district.
She also, just a reminder, she was also on Channel 9 for several years. At noon time, she would go in there a couple times a year and do a live meal preparation on Channel 9 at the 12 o'clock news. So those are always fun days to say, I know her, you know? But, yeah, that was pretty cool, and it's going to be sad to see that not anymore either.
All right, so we have a motion to accept the School Nutrition Director's Letter of Retirement with significant regrets. All those in favor of the motion? Seven in favor, and the student rep in favor. And we also have a motion, we have a, a letter of resignation from the Elementary Assistant Student Service Director? Denise?
I'll make a motion to accept the Elementary Assistant Student Service Director Letter of Resignation.
A motion from Denise, and a second from Brian. Discussion on this one? You see?
Just again, wanted to express gratitude to Brian Ryan for his, his, his time with the district, particularly with the DEIJ Committee, and his understanding of the sort of the, the broader picture of mental health SEL that is shared by the district and that he especially demonstrated.
If I could just piggyback you, see, I thought, you know, Doris was well-recognized. Brian is not somebody who's on the front of, of us often, but an incredible gentleman, incredibly heartfelt person, who just really cared deeply about, who cares deeply about students and staff, and so he will definitely be missed.
All right, all those in favor of acceptance of the Elementary Assistant's Student Service Director's Letter of Resignation? Seven in favor, and the student rep in favor. All right. Procedures for management of electric vehicle chargers at the middle school. Dr. Morse, do you want to introduce this one?
So this is a relatively complex issue in, in the sense that where we are as a country, as a world, in terms of the transition from traditional gas-powered vehicles to electric vehicles. And, you know, in, in many ways, we're at the very beginning of this process, and, you know, we see announcements every, seems like every week, that by 2025, or by 2035, you know, all the cars are going to be produced, they're going to be electric and so forth. Well, you know, we're far from that, from that point. And in my memo, I talk about using the data that I have related to my car, because Tesla gives me, you know, pretty detailed analysis of, of how, how much I'm charging a year and so forth. And, you know, what it costs me at home, what it costs for this building in particular. And then the other variable that I was thinking about after I sent the memo out was the, the hybrid vehicles versus a fully electric vehicle. So when we think about this building, right now, there's three vehicles that are using the chargers. One is a Volkswagen that's fully electric. The two others are hybrids, and one's a Toyota Prime, and the other one is a Jeep. The difference in the size of the batteries between a hybrid and, say, my Tesla is significant. We're talking about maybe nine kilowatts versus 60 kilowatts in, in my vehicle. So, you know, if I plug my So, you know, if I plugged my vehicle in, in the morning, and it was at 20%, and I wanted to get to 80%, it's relatively quick. It's like, you know, 30 minutes, 35 minutes. But if I was at zero trying to go to 100, it would be an eight-hour process because when you get to the very end, the last 20%, it's like, the analogy I would use is, it's like pouring water into a cup, and you get to that point where the water is right at the rim, and if you go any further, it's going to go over. So what happens is that it turns into a trickle charger, basically, in the last 20%. So somebody with a Jeep or the Toyota Prime, they plug in, they literally would charge that in, you know, less than a half an hour. Whereas if it was my car, it would, if I was going to charge it from zero to 100, it would be an eight-hour event. So one of the other things that I provided for data is currently, Sue and I looked at the electric bill for this building, and it came out to an average of 36 cents per kilowatt hour right now. And then we had the notice from Eversource that it was going to drop to 18 points something cents. So I was trying to calculate all that in and all the social dynamics of why we included the chargers in this building, and it really boiled down to, right from the beginning, the whole issue of sustainability. And so it really comes down to, you know, do we charge? Don't we charge? How much do we charge? And so forth. And I use my vehicle as the extreme. And at the current rate, if I plugged in, it would cost about two bucks for the day to charge it versus the Toyota or the Jeep, that would probably cost about 50 cents or less, because the batteries are so much different. So there's a lot of social dynamics, and then there's the accountability to taxpayers and the commitment of the school to sustainability. This will become a big issue 10 years from now, as electric vehicles become far more pervasive. So we're at the front end of an issue that doesn't have a lot of financial implication on the district at this point. Michael asked me if I had plugged into the unit over here, and I hadn't because I charge at home. And I drive in, my vehicle's literally full when I leave my house, and so I haven't had a need to use the unit here. And, you know, I was talking to Bill Sullivan, who also owns electric, he owns the electric Volkswagen, and I wrote in there that normally, if you're going to plug in, you need to plug in, you know, around 50%. Bill said that's exactly what happens with him. So he plugs in, it's a convenience. The Jeep and the Toyota, it's a convenience. I don't think at this point, anybody is, I know at this point, nobody's waiting in line, there's no huge demand. And then perhaps by the time there is demand, we'll be working off the solar array here, owning it. So that's another factor. So in terms of putting this in front of the board, the whole point in putting it in front of the board is one to make you aware that the chargers were installed, that they're homestyle chargers, they're 48-amp chargers. We did, during the construction process, look at putting in commercial chargers. The difference is $500 versus $30,000. Same charger. It wouldn't be a supercharger like you see, you know, in the shopping malls. It would have been a 48-amp charger, but with a charge card type of arrangement. And so just in terms of cost, we thought that was a ridiculous cost for the time period, and maybe something a future board wants to consider. So right now, they're a convenience with very little cost to the district, but, I mean, it's not hard to see, looking into the future, that that convenience could become costly, costly to the district over time. So that's where we are, and I'd be glad to answer any questions the board has.
I have absolutely no issue with staff, you know, just utilizing at such a small cost. However, I do think that it is important to monitor and perhaps to ask if staff are going to use it to perhaps submit their license plate numbers, only because I could foresee word getting out university, oh, there's free charging over at the middle school, you know? And it could become that issue down the road, certainly. So that's the only thing I would say is that as long as someone is sort of keeping an eye and making sure that it is, you know, either faculty, staff, or visitors, you know, I don't have an issue with visitors to the building, I just don't want it to become this, you know, university convenience over here, I guess.
So Bill Sullivan, the assistant principal in this building, is more than willing to do that monitoring, register people who are using it. And if the board decides they want to charge, he would make sure that he collected whatever fee the board wanted to be collected. So again, for him today, it would be three vehicles. It's not a big, big chore. 10 years down the road, that could become a big chore, and we may need to, you know, the board at that point in time may want to put some formalized procedures in place. But for right now, it's not a big deal for Bill to do it, and he was more than willing to do it.
Given the amount it costs, it doesn't seem worth his time, that the time converted to salary at this point, other than to just maintain general property security, as Denise mentioned. Is there a meter for the entire EV array? Do we know how much is going into vehicle charging, even if we don't know per station or per day?
No, we don't, we wouldn't know that. I mean, it's pretty easy to calculate based on the three vehicles that are doing it. We can do rough estimates, but we don't, it's not on a separate meter, no.
I would be interested, were I in the board in a year, to return to this and to have some sense. It'd be interesting, the cost, to put it, just a tracking meter for the entire setup, so that future boards could understand how much is this is costing, particularly, as you say, as we're at the beginning of an exponential curve, hopefully towards the adoption of EVs.
Whether we'll even check and see what the cost is to do that.
Yeah, I agree with everything Dr. Morse has said, I think. But it's also worth acknowledging, one of the philosophical decisions the previous board has made, but I understand, I guess, is still consistent until we decide otherwise, is that, you know, access to facilities of the district that incur an additional cost above and beyond what the district would otherwise spend for district-related activities generally get charged to third parties. In this case, though, you know, the difference between a $500 and a $30,000, you know, point-of-sale device just doesn't seem warranted at all. One temporary solution, just given that, I want to acknowledge it's still a public resource that we're, that the public is funding, maybe there's a way that doesn't create a great additional burden for the district would be to set up a system where users could donate for use of the chargers. So if you're a regular user, and it, for example, it costs, you know, roughly $2 per charge, and you know you use the charger, you know, 20 times a month or something, just offering people an opportunity to donate to something that would cover that cost that otherwise wouldn't be incurred by the district might be a good temporary solution until we, until something more cost-effective comes along.
If they're staff members, they have access to the Titan system? Or they use that, the way the kids pay for school lunch, when parents pay for school lunches?
Yes. Yeah, we could set up something there.
Brian?
This was discussed a lot over the two years that the school was being built in our construction meetings, and I was, at first, I was kind of against it, but Dr. Morse made a really good argument to it, but my concern was more security, people coming in here after hours, you know, charging up their cars or what have you, which is why the happy medium for everybody was to put it on a timer from 6:00 AM to 5:00 PM, which basically is staff time. So we don't have people coming in here late at night that shouldn't be here, or UNH kids coming in and parking their car here all night while they go back to their, you know, their dorm to charge their car. So I don't have an issue with it at all. I think the, it's so miniscule in what it costs. I fully support leaving it as-is for now, but always leaving it open for evaluation. It's not a problem now. If it does become a problem, we deal with it then. That's the way I look at it.
To me, this is a, while it may seem small, and it may not be big dollars right now, this is an equity issue, that this is a limited resource, there's a limited number of stations, it's only available to staff that work at the middle school, it's only a benefit to staff that drive electric vehicles, and we're not providing a similar subsidy to anybody else in the district. So from an equity perspective, I think that we should adopt a fee schedule for this, regardless of how it's managed. And I would suggest that in order to keep, kind of keep that visible from a year-to-year basis, that that become part of the facilities' fee schedule, the KF-R, so that it gets reviewed on an annual basis. So I appreciate the background and the, you know, trying to quantify what's going on here. I hope that in a few years down the road, there are district vehicles that we will want to charge at those stations, and that'll turn out to be a really, really beneficial thing. Regardless of whether the electricity comes from the solar panels or from the grid, there is a cost to the district of that energy usage. So I will move to set the charging rate of $2 a day per, for a day or a portion of a day at the middle school, electric vehicle chargers. I have a second from Matt. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion to set the rate at $2 a day? We have three and the student rep in favor, opposed. Four opposed, so the motion fails.
Would it be a motion or other type of conversation to note the follow-up for possibly installing a meter and also to put it on the board's calendar for discussion in a year?
I think that requires a motion, because I'll follow through and give you that information, so.
Including the being on the board calendar?
I just think we can just continue the conversation once Dr. Morse, you know, has the info, I mean, we can revisit as far as what it would cost to get a separate meter, if that's, you know, you want that information now, just to have it.
I mean, once we have some, once we start actually tracking the amount of electricity that's being used, returning to the fee schedule question.
Yeah, and I would say that Bill is more than willing to do that. Even if there's no fee, I'll have Bill monitor its usage, and then we can have some sense of how much it's costing us anyway. Have them register the vehicles and keep track of how long somebody has used it. Because it's really, it's really the cars like mine and Bill's that are going to be the juice users. The Toyota and the Jeep are going to be really nominal, but we can keep track of those as well. Kara, did you get who voted for and who voted against? Can we, that's I always wondered, because we have to have that.
It was myself and Dan and Matt in favor. And Paige and the student rep.
Okay, did you, you hear that? Yeah, Matt's giving it to her. I just was wondering if she got that vote.
Yes, thank you for that. Yeah, okay. All right, moving on then to update on the school board goals for the year.
So I'm going to invite Suzanne back to the podium. I do want to point out in your packet, the, there's a yellow packet inside your folders. We provided that because this is the report we gave you in October, in case you wanted to reference the report that Suzanne's going to give now against what we were doing in October. It's always a challenge to figure out how to provide a lot of information in a way that's simple and clear for you as board members. So we kept it out of the electronic. So if you want to see where we were, it's yellow. If you want to see where we are, Suzanne's going to do that right now.
So I'm just going to go through and talk a little bit about each area and the updates, and then answer any questions that you may have. The superintendent transition, Jim worked on that. So I defer to you, Jim.
So where we left the committee, the committee, the full board voted to have Catherine be the administrative representative. The organization was NESDEC that was chosen to do the work, and the committee wanted to come back with NESDEC in February and March to lay out some pre-work before we get to the official work in the summer. So we'll get that queued up for you guys in February and March.
Yeah, and Catherine is, I was going to provide that update later on, but Catherine is working with Wendy and NESDEC to start to get paperwork together.
The communications area, I worked with Genevieve on that, and she updated according to the presentation that she gave earlier, I believe it was last month, and went through the areas, the goals that you had set forth, and said where, basically the progress and her next steps, and most of that is going to look similar to what she presented to you already. So as far as where we are with the website, we're really just, she's going through and meeting with people, she's validating content, working on the site map and working on migration. She's looking at the calendars, she continues to look at the calendars and what that's going to look like for the soft launch. And she's also working on best practices as well, the handbook of best practices that she, she anticipates that this work will continue as it has been, and that it will, she'll have an update in the spring of 2023, so. So that is moving forward. The inventory of the social media platforms, we have, we are, we do have an inventory, we need to revisit it, and Jen's gone through it and created a spreadsheet, but we need to go back and revisit it and look at it. At this time, with the amount of time that she's putting into the website and the calendar, I think that that's kind of taken a little bit of a backseat, and the handbook, I think that's taken a little bit of a backseat right now for her. Does anyone have any questions about? No? Okay. The curriculum instruction and assessment, competency-based learning and reporting, we are, Jay has been working with his faculty to create a feedback, a feedback form for parents as well as for students. And so as the report cards go out, that survey will also go out to get some feedback from parents and from students about the reporting and the changes that have been made this year. The goal is to, the goal was originally to have it by February 15th. I'm not sure that that's enough time to be able to bring it all back together, to go through all of the data and put it in a presentable format, considering some of the delays with snow days and getting all of that together. So it may actually have to be for the first meeting in March. We were hoping for February 15th. In the, throughout, as far as the transition planning, you've been hearing a lot about that the last few meetings and today specifically. So we will continue to work on that transition from eighth grade to the high school, to ninth grade, and we will be reporting back to the board. As I said, Shannon and Stephanie will be coming to talk a little bit about what the transition plan has been, with the changes they've made, and how that's going and what's coming up. Because the transition for the kids will go all the way into the start of the school year and beyond even, so we'll be doing that as well, presenting about that. Competencies have been reviewed, they've been updated on the high school website, and as I said at the last meeting, we're working, Jay is working with Jen to figure out exactly what that's going to look like on the website. The old competencies for the middle school are still up, but we are, she's working with Jay to get that updated because they, it is ready to go. So if any parents had any questions about the competencies, they could reach out and Jay could share that with them. But as far as what that's going to look like on the website, we just have to make sure that whatever goes up now can be moved over seamlessly to the new site. And I've started reaching out to some of our school districts that are peer school districts and talking to some of their curriculum specialists and assistant superintendents around competencies at their districts, and what that looks like, where they are with competencies, K through 12, and where they are with reporting and grading systems. So I'll have more information, as I said, I'm in the process of gathering that, so I'll have more information for you about that. The date of completion, we'll definitely, I'll have it by May. It has May 31st on there, and I'll have it by then. And then the diversity, equity, inclusion and justice, Rachel recently came to report back on her work, and Jim had talked a little bit about the metrics and the evaluation that Rachel will be going through, so I think that those have all been updated as well for you.
Question about competencies? Question about competencies, and I remember your more thorough sort of pair of presentations a few months ago, and I think in the conversation, you described how certain departments, certainly middle school, high school, and even K-12, were developing competencies for their departmental pathways. I know also that you are working on the sustainability and DEIJ-related competencies, whether they're together or apart. I wonder if it would be, if you could talk to those and sort of where we are in all departments going through that, and if it might be even helpful to have a, you know, a chart that shows the breakdown of that significant piece in aligning all of our competencies.
Sure, so we have, I can share with you the curriculum review cycle, so I'm happy to share that with the school board. That review cycle had, last year had the science, science, physical, science, health, and a few others working together on their competencies. That was the first phase. The second phase would be to really, to define them more clearly, get them posted, make sure that they're exactly what the teachers are utilizing in their classroom. So it's hard, I don't want to post anything now that is not going to be able to be changed over to the new website, so I feel like we're in this kind of limbo phase. So I will work with Jen to get the ones that are ready to go, health is ready to go, and we can put that up. Science was one of the, one of the departments that we worked on over the summer, that one it still has another summer of work to go. As far as scope and sequence is concerned, K through 12, not, our, K through four uses standards, they're not full competencies, and so they're not full competency-based. So we're working, we have a group from both elementary schools, and David and Misty and I are going to be doing some work with the New Hampshire Learning Institute around competencies and standards, and what that could look like for elementary school, and just the beginning phase of that conversation, and that's going to be happening, it actually starts on the 10th of February. So that part of the discussion's happening. As far as competencies are for grades five through 12, that scope and sequence of competencies is part of curriculum, but it doesn't necessarily always define the content strands. So I think what might be helpful is to take some time at another school board meeting to talk about the scope and sequence work that we do in the summertime, the curriculum cycle, and then how competencies blend into that, and I don't know if that's a workshop or a school board meeting, I'm not sure how you'd like for me to do that, I'm happy to do that. We have a whole nother cycle of departments that are going to be starting work over the summer, I won't be pushing that out until after the budget, because there was a request to have some increases for professional development and for time for teachers, and so I don't want to push that information out until I know exactly what, who we'll be able to bring in and what the time is that we have to be able to do that work. So, it's sort of a vague answer, in order to give you more specifics, I feel like I need more time to do that, I don't know if this is the meeting to do that, but I'm happy to, I can send to you the curriculum cycle, if you're interested in looking at that, I can bring it to the next school board meeting, and then we can talk about that, but, and then maybe there's another time where we can get more, dive a little bit more deeply into scope and sequence and competencies and what that looks like for the district.
Yeah, I think maybe, you know, an overview of the review cycle is great, you know, share that. My opinion is that when it comes to scope and sequence, it's probably worth having a short overview here for the board, and then see after that what questions, what follow-up questions are, if it's worth digging into a full workshop after that. Now, I say that's my opinion, most likely I will no longer be chair when that gets onto the agenda, so.
And I'll just say that the reason for it, my question was, I hadn't realized really still how much work in aligning competencies needs to happen, and I couldn't say right now, within, you know, 10%, how, what percent complete we are as a district, and getting to a pretty stable, you know, K-12 system for that, because it's sort of department by department, and then there are these different stages in the review cycle, and, you know, there's, I also don't know where additional funds or other decisions that the school board could make would be able to accelerate or improve the quality of these things. So that's why, you know, some sort of sense of, you know, these are the steps, maybe in each department that, or at each level that needs to take place, and here's where we could go faster if the board did something, and here's where it's just, you know, the wisdom of time that is needed.
So let Suzanne and I can craft some kind of progress report by level and get it back to the board for review along with the scope and sequence?
The diversity, equity, and inclusion competencies wouldn't be part of the curriculum cycle, because Rachel's working on those right now, and that's part of her report out that she gave, and neither would sustainability, but departments would be a part of that. Does anyone have any other questions?
So, thank you very much for the update, I really appreciate going through this and seeing all of the activity that's going on. I had put on the agenda potentially a motion to act on adjusted recommended changes, I don't think that there's really a need to make a formal update to the goals at this point, I think the update was sufficient.
Can I just add, Michael, that in all of the years that we've worked together, I was saying this to Denise and Michael, this is the first time that we haven't been disrupted from executing the board's goals without some massive interference. So it's been a really good year, I think the progress we've made on your goals is pretty substantial, and we're, you know, by and large, right on target, and so I'm really pleased with that.
If we have a major disruption to this progress, now we'll know why. All right, thank you. The last item for discussion action items is the added item for rescheduling the March 15th meeting. So the March 15th meeting happens, is currently scheduled for the day after local elections, we cannot seat new members of the board until at least the Friday following the election, which is by law the end of the period by which somebody could request a recount. So if we hold the meeting, if you hold the meeting on March 15th, you will not be able to seat, have new members participate in that meeting. So my suggestion, if it fits with calendars and whatnot, is to move that just back a week to March 22nd. March is a five Wednesday month, so there's still two weeks between that and the first meeting in April. Wendy's already checked, and the space here is available that night without conflict on the 22nd, so.
I have a project committee up in Farmington that night that I have to be at from 7:00 to about 9:00, so it's kind of difficult for me.
So, I do not expect to be on the board at that point, so I, this is not my thing, I leave that to...
I think it's important for our first meeting after the election to have our new board members seated, so although, you know, I understand, I mean, sometimes things do happen and someone can't be here, I guess, I don't know, I mean, unless we put it off yet another week and had two meetings in a row, I guess that would be the other possibility.
Or to cancel it altogether and just skip to the first meeting in April.
Does it have to be on a Wednesday? Could it be on the 21st? Does that fit everybody's schedule?
On the 21st, as long as we put the announcement out in time, and Wendy would do that.
21st would work for me.
23rd?
I have, I think there's a concert in this room that night, I have concert question mark, so I think that may be taken.
I do, do the 22nd, I'll get someone to take my spot.
Do the 22nd, Brian?
I appreciate that, and I think for the continuity of the public, it's important for us, if at all possible, to meet on Wednesdays, just, you know, it's not that it's out of this reasonable scope, but given that it's just a conflict with being allowed to seat the full board, which I think is absolutely critical, I don't think we can hold the meeting on the originally scheduled date, so then it's just a question of when to reschedule it. If the 22nd can work, then I would support that.
So that should be a motion, because you're changing the date of the meeting?
I'll make a motion to change the regularly scheduled meeting, originally scheduled for March 15th to March 22nd.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Denise and a second from Dan to move the March 15th meeting to March 22nd. Any further discussion?
Does, so we're going to have to schedule probably a manifest meeting at some point between those two, I would think.
So you'll need a manifest meeting, a special manifest meeting between the 15th and the 22nd, it can go to the 22nd? Okay.
All right. All those in favor of moving the March 15th meeting to the 22nd? We have five in favor, and the student rep in favor, opposed, and abstentions, and UC and I abstain. So five in favor, student rep in favor, zero opposed, two abstentions, and so we'll move that meeting from the 15th to the 22nd. All right, are there any committee updates tonight?
DEIJ committee met last night, and we had interesting discussions, we broke out into small groups on, along different topics that we, or directions that we feel that the, or I guess topics that we want to work on, issues that we want to work on. I know that in my group, I'm on a subcommittee that is looking into planning an event or two for the community later on this spring, so I know that's what we talked about in my group.
My group was about recruiting and sort of engaging more people in the process, and I think that the original prompt was for, you know, for staff and teachers as well as community members. The conversation last night focused on how to bring more diverse voices into these type of, not leadership, but sort of the DEIJ committee level input to the process, and the tension between perhaps the committee members who are really self-identify and are committed to DEIJ-related work, and those perhaps with more lived experience that don't necessarily have that identity as someone who spends a lot of extra time and thought towards making that kind of systemic change. And so if you are, if someone, you know, a student or a family member or someone in the community has a perspective, stories, input to share, but doesn't feel that the DEIJ committee is the, sort of is a worthwhileer, is the best fit for the way that they'd like to be engaged, we brainstormed a couple of other ways that that could happen. You know, any readers who might, and viewers who wish to contribute in this way, sort of not with the rigor of a committee, but to bring a small, smaller group together and share experiences and ideas for the district, I know Rachel would be eager to hear those suggestions.
The district wellness committee will be meeting Monday at 4:00 PM, and that will be a remote meeting, but on Teams.
The sabbatical committee has met, I think, three times, and there are multiple interesting proposals, I think the committee is close to having a conclusion to forward to Dr. Morse. One thing that has come up in those discussions that's beyond the purview of that committee is that our policy today says that we can award one full-year sabbatical and one half-year sabbatical, and there seems to be more interest in terms of faculty proposals in the half-year sabbatical option. So just to put that out there as something for the board to consider if we would want to change, consider changing the structure of the sabbatical program in the future. So, so hopefully, I don't know if that will be able to come back in time for the February 15th meeting, but certainly by March 1st, we'll have the sabbatical proposal for the board. All right, are there anybody who would like to speak for public comment this evening? Nope, all right, closing actions, we have our future meeting dates here, the deliberative session is right here in the middle school recital hall, so that's a different venue than it's been in in the past, at 7:00 on Tuesday, weather permitting. We do have a posted additional school board meeting on February 7th, after, immediately to follow the deliberative session, that school board meeting will only happen if any of the warrant articles are changed and the school board needs to take action or consider changes to the articles that come out of the deliberative session. And then our next two regular meetings on February 15th and March 1st. With that, we do have two non-publics tonight, the first one is related to facility use, so I will move that we enter a non-public session pursuant to New Hampshire RSA Chapter 91A, Section 3, Paragraph 2, Subparagraph C, which is discussion of matters that are likely to adversely affect the reputation of a person other than a member of the school board. This requires a roll call, oh, actually, if you need a second first. A second from Denise, and this requires a roll call vote.
Heather Smith, yes. UC Terrell, yes.
Dan Klein, yes.
Michael Williams, yes.
Denise Day, yes.
Brian Sisneros, yes.
Matt Bacon, yes.
All right, thank you very much, everybody. Our intent is to just come back for the purposes of transitioning from one non-public to the other and then to adjourn, so there'll be no further public action this evening.